Good evening and welcome to the July 22 Proctor Select Board meeting. If you'd all please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And first order of business is to review and approve the agenda. A motion would be in order.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed as unanimously. Open public comment and good stuff.
How about minutes?
Did you want to do the minutes?
Oh, no, I just passed our budget. Review the minutes of July 8th. A motion would be in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed as unanimously. Alright, open public comment, good stuff. Well, I will add for good stuff since we've been here last that we held two basket raffles for two separate families that are going through some medical issues in town and I think that the support from our community was outstanding and they raised, both raised very good sums, so I'm sure the Harrington family and the Smith family thank the town of Proctor. It was nice to see so many people come out and support them for those two events. And hopefully it doesn't rain Wednesday so we can have the concert.
Yeah, I don't know, it's not looking good.
Yeah, it's starting to be kind of...
I told him I'd let him know that morning.
Alright. Alright, discussion. So, orders are going around, everyone's looking, signing?
Yes.
Okay. Highway paving bids, so Judy provided a breakdown of the streets and roads, discussion about that?
So they both got back to me and broke it up into street by street, so if we had to make cuts or we wanted to just pave, you know, certain areas based on the funding we have, then we could choose. I really want to get all of it paved. I think we can use the funds for the reserve fund because that was voted on and moved into there to use for improvements in town that are going to benefit the people of the town. And I know roads are one of the biggest complaints in town, so we would have, the difference from what we're getting, you know, for grant money and what we put in the budget, we would probably have to take, I think it was roughly, depending on which offer you go with, but I think it was like $180,000, $180,000 to move into, to pave the entire portion. But I think tonight I would just like you to have a motion to approve who you want to do the work.
And can I just make one comment on the spreadsheet, just in case anybody looks at it? You know, for the Pike totals?
Yep.
For the Main Street, you know, they've got $99,982. I think that includes the total from the Wilk of $41,451. Because if you read the cold plane and paving, that's $57,000.
Oh, oh, I think you're right, you're right. Yep, you're right.
You know, just in case somebody looks at that thinking that we were looking at the wrong figure.
No, you're correct.
And that was going to be one of my questions Judy, about, you know, we did allocate $150,000 in the budget and I was just going to ask, you know, how it was that Florence Road got on the fast track of planning and...
Because I think it was on there from last year and they've had a lot of issues on Florence and last year...
Yep, yep, you answered, you answered the question.
Okay.
Yep. I was glad, I was glad that you did and my concern about where it was going to come from, the financing.
Yep.
And, and you know, that road being so long, it's, it'd be difficult to build it into the budget because we can see right here from the paving cost, $250,000, you know, that would be without using the cold plating and reclaiming.
And then couldn't we take some of the timber harvest money and claw back into this to find out?
That can go into highway, yeah. We can move that around.
Or even into the reserve funds.
I'm not, I'm honestly not sure about that, that specific reserve fund.
Okay.
How it works, if the money we put because it was ARPA funds at one time, if it remains, is that reserve fund specifically?
Okay, so they can't co-mingle?
But we can use the timber from Florence for other projects.
Sure.
Like, then we can't, so...
Right, okay.
Yep. And just for a correction, under Pike, for the total for Main Street is $58,530 rather than the $99,982. But when I tally it all up, their bids basically came out when they did for the whole project, you know, when they gave us the bid before for the entire project, the totals are identical to those bids. This is just broken out street by street.
Right, right.
This is all comparable considering the difference in price, Wilk and Pike are doing comparable, same thing basically, same bidding, the same thing, I'm assuming.
Alright, so...
I'll make the motion now that we accept the bid from Wilk, the total of $392,368 for the cold plane paving and reclaim of, as applicable, for Florence Road, Pleasant Street, North Street, and Main Street.
Second.
Any discussion? Do we have any idea of the start time?
Um, no, I can let, ask them.
Okay.
We have like an end date, so October 1st, so we're keeping that in mind.
And hopefully our roads don't look like Rutland when they're coming into town.
We don't have a lot of manholes popping up like that.
Yeah.
I don't mean that, I mean the tar all over the roads. I'm not a fan of the spuckled look on the, on the roadway, so... Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There's some passages unanimously. Alright, Zion Growers, status update.
A little later on, second. I'm reading all the, oh, here. I've been here for recording. I'll ask everyone to be ready, so it doesn't make sense, aye, aye. Um, so the update, um, so the timeline of the building is kind of the main thing that everyone is asking for. The biggest thing that's been done recently is the EPA testing of the surrounding background of the zone. They were on the property last week doing testing, back 20 acres and in 56 main, or we just don't know, 52 was already done when the museum was opened before, for us previously. So as of right now, the main timeline is on board. Until we get the architectural money, the grant that we are working on, there's really no timeline, just due to the fact that we don't know what we can have that realistically. They are in line, basically we do that work whenever we're ready, we've spoken to them recently, we have that to do, but just lost the last eight months relatively, that's kind of where we're at with that. Once I said all the prep work is done, any information that you might be working on in the buildings for our safety, things like that, if you need to reach out about events and things like that, what we might have at the building, any of the lead space we have on the second floor where entrance seems to be used to be, we can't really do anything to that and have some going there. Insurance purposes, safety purposes, things like that, to make sure that the building is ready to go. As far as the business additions, stuff we've been working on, we have spoken to a contractor from Europe, specifically Poland, Europe, so many places. Basically to do prefab housing with hemp, and live mixed together to make hemp. Essentially we would use to make two, one or two test houses that essentially go up in that space, kind of give an idea of what it would look like, uses, energy uses, things like that. Our long-term goal would be to use back 20 acres to build some residential housing. Originally this is something we discussed with Mike, who is town manager, so we'd like to fill that area, you know, given whatever specs we need, whatever regulations there are for the town, which we will do at that time, to kind of get us an idea. But we are pre-fabbing basically all of the site, things like after the storms in the building. Something else that was discussed with Mike at the time was a gas station slash small grocery store, kind of like simple stores you see around outside of Rutland, something that the town had been working on at the time, of course, things have changed, we'd like to know. But those two were the main things that were discussed early on with us that we could add to that idea of all the that is pre-fabs. Something else that we've been working on to add to the space is manufacturing of plastics. We've been working with Janet Curry, whose business is still running USA, I don't know how long they've been there, it's a bit of a branding, but essentially they make plastic pieces for pallets for any molds that could be used for plastic ware, blackware, single use items, things like that, utensils, straws, things in that nature. They currently have contracts with Cisco, way in, not well, comes, comes through, I guess I go over the compass, compass group to supply areas in Florida, as well as the few resorts in the southern area, mainly one that is a marquee bill, they do not just restaurants, but resorts as well. So for Miami, I believe that there's roughly two million straws they go through there here, it's about two million straw companies, things like that. But those are kind of the two big things that we're working on now from more of a business standpoint, that we go in directly towards from the building, as I said, prefab houses application would be put in there. The company that we're working with that does this in Europe already, that we spoke to earlier last week, is currently building houses in Europe, the specifications of which would be most merit standards, but there are a couple things with merit standards that are a little different, but those are all things we've been working with as far as for test houses, to make sure that we can all get that.
Can I get in the room for a sec?
Sure.
This is all, you're talking on this property across the street?
Correct.
And the prefab houses, when they're manufactured, are going to be trucked out, I'm assuming to be parked somewhere, or is it here, there'd be, is it by order?
For semis or...
Well, when you say the prefab houses, so I understand, when something like that's complete, you would have to put them somewhere, I'm assuming unless they're made by order, right? Or if it's just a, a display for sale?
So, right now in that warehouse, there's about 7,000 square feet, so as far as storage, we have most richly, we're really better locked for. As far as the two showhouses we're going to leave on that back lot, the back area, about 22 acres of the land back there, to be, again, within regulations, there's now in town, there's things like that, but I think the prefab, the finishes, the store there, house there, some would be made to order, of course, but the idea is that we can residentialize some of that space back there with market rate housing, as I kind of mentioned, something that was mentioned was needed in the area, to add to the housing market for kind of suburb of Rutland area, in addition to what's for...
So, and part of that whole environmental testing and inspections that they're doing is going to basically review that property, that acreage back there to support it as far as housing, if it would be, you know, feasible and, okay?
Basically to make sure that there's no environmental tenements and issues for long-term habitability, as well as any 56 building for our long-term use and manufacturing and processes, things like that, to make sure it's safe.
So do you have an architect that's already done the drawings when you talk about architectural money from the grant?
Uh, no, we haven't done any of that as it was the planning grant, so we're not allowed to start it, basically get anything going until that's all taken care of. Architect we've been working with, and it's the same one we've been working with in St. John's Bay, it's Scott and Partners out of Toronto.
So...
Scott and who?
Scott and Partners.
So when you talk about what's going on and what's happening, essentially the only thing that's taking place is the EPA testing?
As of right now, yes, I'm doing work around the building, shoring up some of the holes, there's quite a bit of work that's just kind of not done, as far as the bigger picture is.
And the grant is essentially a planning grant, so planning, that you have an architect, that you have drawings and those kinds of things, right?
Correct.
And, so none of that's going to take place until when, are you thinking?
Um, as, I mean, we've already had everything lined up for them, as soon as we're ready, it's time to give a word for the town, or...
And these businesses, you've just spoken to people, I mean, you have nothing necessarily in place that people are coming or moving in there?
Well, we can't move anything in there at the moment, besides the fabrication is much larger, we can fit 52 and 56, just as I said, the environmental hasn't been done yet, so there's the phase one, the testing, and there's the phase two, the actual element that has to be done. So we can't really do anything, again, down the architecture piece and hold on that, it's kind of something that's back, so we're just waiting to sign that and then forward the rest.
Does anybody else have any questions?
So, I just want to make something, so my understanding, the, the grant through Proctor is a planning grant, so nothing can be done until that's signed, and then the planning actually takes place in terms of moving forward with that?
Correct.
And then once the planning grant is done and all of the planning has been done, then another implementation grant will have to be done to actually implement all those plans?
Correct. There's obviously some things that we will take care of, but basically, yes, we're not really allowed to start anything, because the grant paid for anything once we started it, so we can't start and use that money to pay for those, to use those ones to pay for things, and that's it, to take care of.
I just have one, on the prefabs, you're saying build to order, but then you're talking about the 20 acres behind there, are you saying build and, and put them on the 20 acres to sell as homes?
Oh, it would be, it would be both.
Okay.
So there would be, as I said, market rate housing for the area, almost 20 acres, and then continuing project of fabricating homes for houses around the state, ideally, again, we have the rail and things like that to use for shipping, so we can work with different entities, different areas of the states, but it's a little bit of both.
Okay.
How are you going to access, if somebody had, if you had some housing there, how are they going to access that 22 acres?
Well, that would be part of the planning you have to do, because there are two things that could be done, I know there is some road residential access in the back, of course, I've walked back there, there would be quite a work, bit of work to be done, there's also the work we're looking to do in front of the building to give access, as well as the bridge that even needs to get reconstructed or bring down, but again, that would all be part of the planning, we'll see the best way to make that accessible.
Yeah, because that bridge doesn't have the height standards that need to be...
Yeah, as of right now, the bridge is supposed to come down anyway, so long...
You mean the little bridge out there?
Yeah, the little train, one that you're...
Yeah.
But ideally, we have it from the residential area in the back, where there is already some housing, because you can walk back there to the right and kind of surround, there's a number of houses that run profit on that.
Yeah, but they're up to a different level, aren't they?
Uh, yes, it would require some additional roadways, but in the long run, on 22 acres, I mean, depending on what the ordinance is, our, we could get to 20 houses depending on size and things like that, but that all depends on what's...
Now, you're not talking about setting up, are you talking about setting up permanent residents with houses? Is that what we're look...
Permanent building, permanent housing.
Permanent housing?
Yep, that would be selling, it would be, I told you, anything like that, that would be sold long-term, you know, one or two bedroom homes, fully outfitted, back room.
Certain lot sizes or...
Well, again, that depends on what the ordinance is going to say about what you have left.
Okay, okay.
Obviously, we don't want to build anything that you're not supposed to do nothing, so we would obviously be going through to make sure that we're meeting all of the requirements.
So in your mind or in your plan, how many houses do you think you could get permanent set up behind there?
Um, I mean, if we're talking less than an acre, at least 22 acres, I mean, around 20 houses seems reasonable, but again, it really depends on what's allowed, and then once the architects come through and say, this is where you can actually build, and once they take the ordinance into account, depending on the river slope and things like that, it'd be really complex.
You have to consider, you know, the water, sewage, utilities, everything?
Yeah, there is, there would have to be, you have free power, of course, running sewer lines, things like that.
Right, right, okay, that's good.
So, realistically, you're not looking at doing anything further than here then? If you're just in phase one and you're going to have to go through phase two, I mean, you're easily eight months before anything transpires?
Well, like I said, we are ready to go as soon as the grant signs, so the architecture stuff, technically tomorrow, we've had everything taken care of. As far as the timeline for that, it's hard to say because that's kind of a little vague, um, we don't really have the information as to actually, and we're past behind on that already, so we should.
So a lot of your original plans are really, what, dreams?
No, we've had lots of work to be done on the building, it's also work, Brandon, my business partner, is currently in Germany, but he's been going to Poland, will be again next week to get, what's it, equipment for textiles, they have some cheaper equipment there, the market rate for the original looking at, so, I will be in North Carolina early beginning of next month, 9th to 12th, looking at processing equipment that they're selling down there. Everything else is moving ahead, not except for the plastics and the fabrication, they like to be going as swift as possible, so sooner we can get moving on everything else and make sure the building is useful, we can get started.
So you pretty much, I'll start, no, go ahead. So you pretty much have like three operations, your original plan, would that have been like the, kind of, for another word, the corrugated board kind of, yeah, and then the plastic and then the housing piece?
Well, it is actually all, because it's all based on the process.
Right, okay.
So once the processing feeds all of those other operations, the process materials, what makes hemp, that's what makes the plastics, and then the fabrication and plastics, actual manufacturing, are just additional value adds on back, and that would be additional business logistics.
Okay, so same process, different product, kind of, faded product?
Well, we haven't mentioned the plastics and things like that, but these are just more refined, you know, these are people we're talking to, these are over and manufacturing, because originally, we haven't had too many manufacturing businesses that wanted to set up here, they wanted to buy this here and then have to ship elsewhere, but these, we have a manufacturing right alongside the processing, which would actually cut the cost for homes when we're talking about shipping and making things around, especially when we're talking about prefabs, for right on the same property. So we'd be cutting costs at the same time, just for a business to business.
And the, the company in Poland, do they have, they sold to the United States at all?
I believe the gentleman who spoke to you was specifically from Poland.
Okay.
There is another manufacturer of hemp, who is the one we spoke to as well, is interested in doing market rate housing, so we can have a combination of those two. But there are companies that have been built in Vermont in America made from hemp, so a lot of the regulations and things like that have been covered, it's more of a question of what we need to do within the town, to make sure we meet expectations.
And what other grants have you secured to go forward, or you're just relying on the grants that are available through the block grant?
Um, well, this is the only one for this right now, we did get the tax credits in order for St. John's Bay, but as far as other grants for processing manufacturing, we found that we've dealt with a bit of it because of where we are as a processor, that's where the addition of manufacturing will help, because most of the grants that we con for, which are USDA farming field grants, things like that, they apply to farmers or they apply to manufacturers. We work between the two as a processor, according to farmers and providing to manufacturers, so, you know, fall into those categories as a mobile manufacturers or manufacturers. So in addition to those, we should kind of push the needle in that direction, but we're also working on actual capital investment from manufacturing.
Because it's certainly going to take a large sum to pre-hub that building?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I don't have any further questions.
Well, one, expenses, any expected expenses for the town itself to lead you to where you think you need to be, as far as even on a finished product, if you were to be completing the next five years?
Uh, no, there shouldn't be any additions, there's nothing that's come up to this point between architects and the contractor we've been working with, negative chase as the contractor, but no, there hasn't been any additions, I think pretty much everything that's been announced for us, the grant that we've been working on now, is pretty much the only thing that, the match for that we're taking care of, and then there's the office time, which is very important as far as cost is concerned.
So this has changed, has this changed since your original plan when you purchased the building, or, or is it something that you knew you were going to have to, to look at different options?
Um, if anything, it's a refining of our original plan, having the prefab manufacturing and plastics manufacturing, which we wanted to do early on, and it's just a question of how do we make that work, and we've found the right partners to work with, Brandon being overseas, this is not a common business product, early last month, or early this month, July, bringing out some of the people that we're currently working with, so it's moving things along in a more specified direction. Janet Curry is someone I've been working with for the last three years at this point, and her plastics manufacturing business, they currently, it's here in Colorado, but they are currently manufacturing plastics as well in USA, so it's kind of an addition where we're looking to do plastics, saying have some, and we wanted to do free buildings and be thousand as well, both of which are interested in working out.
Will the building itself, because of the rail line, will we have access to Ramon Railway, or will they have access if you wanted to load vessels of any kind, boxcars or whatever, or have incoming supplies?
We have discussed that with them, and it's that, as long as we make sure we have all the regulations, we can load, they have that little off rail track there, but it is something that we discussed with them when they said it is prepared.
Good, good.
Of course, the bridge has to go, but not some others.
Right, right.
Is that all?
Yeah.
Well, thank you also much.
Thank you, nice meeting you.
Keep us posted on your, your progress.
As soon as we, a step right there, sort of urgency, as soon as we know more about the environment, we happy, at that point, as I'm sure all, you know, who's again, has decided to close indefinitely as of time, but we are still working with Preservation Trust to continue to look for a lieutenant for that and uses for that, so, you know, they are still working with us to make sure that everyone's careful. But yeah, and if there's anything we have about that, we can have a mission.
Alright, thank you, thanks.
Thank you. Good evening.
You too.
Motion would be in order to appoint Albert as representative to the bus.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, motion would be in order to appoint Rachel Allison to the Park and Rep Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Fire Department, Ford.
Okay, so on here I have the end of August, beginning of September, and then he emailed me after I did this, and they're looking at August 22nd and 23rd to start the boring, but we need to do dig save first, the minimum of 72 hours prior to them showing up for the, on the site. So I'll coordinate that with our Public Works as well as Josh.
So I'll coordinate that with our Public Works as well as Josh over at the Fire Department. So then we'll start on that, so.
Great. Any questions for Judy about that?
Is there required for dig save inside of a building like that?
I think yes, case there's any wires or anything else underneath the building. We have to do it like on driveways, you know?
All right.
Yeah.
The dig save is more an outside. Yeah, that's all right, that's a good thing to.
Since we don't know what's under there.
Exactly.
Okay, Otter Creek Watershed Insec Control District.
All right, I had just this on there just because I know you're all aware of the turnover over there. I see they just added a third person to the list, so now they're down three. I know you guys are meeting tomorrow night to talk about it.
Mike in Salisbury.
I just raised it because it's concerning to me of the turmoil and the fact that it's almost August and they've sprayed once. And I know we don't have mosquitoes, which is a perfect thing, and I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
But I just have concerns of giving them seventeen thousand dollars every year and we get sprayed once. So it's kind of, I don't know if there's something they can do to reconfigure how the process works. You know, do it on, just like everything else, you know, on a.
You know, there's a lot of fixed cost insurance for.
Right, but they're also not do, utilizing anything if they're not spraying.
You know, there'd be, you know, less chemicals, you know, spray things, but there's a lot of fixed costs that.
Right.
Did they confirm they sprayed the entire town when they came the first time?
I did reach out to them, no, no one got back to me.
Because I'm willing to.
Their truck broke down that night, so I don't know if they ended.
So they didn't spray the whole town? So we haven't even had a full spray.
Well, I don't know if they just didn't go down your street. They went up that, up that way, so I don't know if that, they didn't give me a deadline, a timeframe of when they broke down.
They came by, I think it was on Patch Street when we were sitting, they came by, it was pretty quick. Usually it's kind of a slow. Well, they've got new equipment that. Disperses it quicker? Controls the speed of the truck and the amount of spray at that particular speed and what have you, so.
Maybe it is an idea once they get their act together that they come here.
Yeah.
Because I, I think that, you know, it's unfortunate that it's happened the first year that the town voted to buy in, but now I kind of feel like we bought into a lemon. So.
Your concern is warranted, you know? The staff that makes the operation run is still there, there functioning.
Yeah.
You know, and as far as the spraying, it's again, you know, mosquito control.
Controlled by the state.
But.
How many mosquitoes are in the traps and what have you, so.
That'd be, might be nice though if they share that with Judy too. If they're, if they're receiving that, that's data they're collecting, then that's data they should be sharing with us. Because if that's what they're basing it on and we're paying seventeen thousand dollars, then we should at least have access to that data to know.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
That shouldn't be a problem because they do report.
Yep, they have that available and I think they have three spots in town that they have the tracks. And they still are putting in the pellets and what have you to kill in the swampy areas and what have you, so they've done that anyway, and so.
I mean, I understand they have costs and overhead, but they have those costs and overhead. Even if they're spraying us eight times in the summer, they still have those costs and overhead, which are probably even higher, and we're covering it. So if we're banking seventeen thousand dollars and not being sprayed at all, that's a, you know, that's a, that's good revenue coming in that they're not, they're not using anything for, they're not using the trucks.
They should have a budget that shows fixed costs that, which is what we should be paying, right? Based on buying in. And then there should be a separate cost when they come to spray based on the juice that they're spraying. If we only get sprayed one time, then we should be discounted for that, so.
I don't know how it's invoiced, are we paying in advance for this service?
We paid, the first one was July one and the next one's due in October.
But it should be like, it's the same. It's quarterly payments. But it should be dependent on what the activity of what's actually happening. If they can, at the end of the year, I mean, the question can be asked. If it's only a one-time spray, that's all that was needed, that's good. But you shouldn't have to pay for anything additional, you know, it's.
It's an operational budget based on your expenses for the.
And, yeah, and the thing with two, they, the state hired a gentleman from Florida and they, he's used to having thousands and thousands of dollars. And we're in a different situation. We get seventy thousand dollars from the state and, and that has to be applied. We only get back, we get that as we put in costs to the state and.
Yeah, but those costs, as you just said, if you have fixed costs, that, that should be easy to tie back in. It's a double, it can only play on one side, it's got to play on both sides. The other piece is, I think, can they tell us where the catch, where they're catching them?
There's two sites of progress, one is usually on Field Street or Metis or.
Yeah, the Will Street and down by the, by the well. And then they, you know, they've set one up as needed up at the pool.
But yes, we can get that information and the spray route is, you know, listed on the website.
Well, I know what it is, but if you have a system, you can tell if they come down your street or not, it's not rocket science.
Yeah, and then, and then to your point, that does have merit in about, you know, the actual mosquito run in the town. You know, if it's only done twice the season, is there a credit given to you? Because when the budget is looked at, it's looked at, every town pays a different amount. They look at the mileage, that's got to be sprayed.
Right.
And, you know, all the characteristics that they have to deal with. And then they have an algorithm, plugging out the numbers, come up with the budget numbers, and then they, they bill that amount to the town and the town is invoiced four times quarterly based on a calendar year, not a fiscal year, a calendar year. And then there's one part that's missing and you both bring up a good point about, well, looking at, you know, how many times they do come and spray. You know, if, if you only come one and you anticipate you're going to see twelve or sixteen, well, maybe we should look at probably having a credit of some type.
That would be interesting too, when they built their budget, how many times did they anticipate spraying here? Because you had to factor that in to build the budget.
Yes, and I'm sure they do. You know, there's an algorithm, I haven't seen it, but I'm sure that is part of it because you have to know what expenses are.
Yeah.
I mean, I kind of compare it to like if we had a mild winter and we bought all the sand and salt and never had to plow once. We have a surplus of salt and sand and no overtime. So going into the next budget, it's like, okay, we've got a surplus, you know, I mean, it's, it's kind of like to me the same thing.
Yeah, well, one exception, and if they do have a surplus of the.
Spray?
Sprays they have, well, it's, you know, inventory for the next year. It's used the next season, so.
Right, and you have to budget it, so that.
That's right, the next season, they know what they've got in inventory, then they won't budget it for the current.
Right, and that's where the rebate or pre-bait comes from for the town.
Well, but again, by spraying, you're saving time and.
Wear and tear on your.
Yep, so we'll know more, a little bit more after the meeting tomorrow.
Well, I just think maybe September might be nice. By then they should have gotten their act together. If they don't by then, then there's a bigger problem. Maybe invite them to a meeting in September to chat about. By then we'll have an idea.
Of course, we have to have a couple of officers fill the position.
Well, we'll see how that goes.
That's tomorrow night, yes.
Okay.
And then the thing is with the buy-in, that's over a spread of the four years.
Right.
And you're committed. And it takes a two-thirds majority vote of the mosquito district to be able to get out.
Or you just stop paying? If you're not receiving.
And I was right up at the town meeting when he was here, the chair of. So there's many things.
Then I would suggest that they seriously think about the pre-bait system, so.
Well, yes, that will have to be done after the.
Have you had a board?
You know, in September or something.
Well, by September you should know how many times they have sprayed here.
Oh, yes.
And how many times, I, at the next meeting, you should be able to bring us the data from collections and how many times they anticipated spraying here. And if they didn't spray, perhaps the first time that they sprayed the town fully. All right, Sullivan Empowers Audit Services. So Sulya has set the audit up and.
They need signatures, and there's two copies so that I think they'll, we both get an original?
Oh, I was just looking to see if the amount was on there. Is that on here? No? Oh my God, I'm having a fast start.
You are?
I am warm in here. It says one percent thirty days.
It's more the scope of the work and what they're going to do.
Okay, well, it says single audit is six thousand for one major program, four thousand for each additional program. So I guess once they get in, it's usually what, about fourteen thousand dollars or something it seems like, so.
They're coming in August too.
We have to do it.
They'll be here August twenty-second, twenty-first, twenty-second, I think, to do, start the.
Of August?
Yeah.
All right, motion would be in order to approve and sign the contract.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, I don't know whether it's three, so I'll just pass it. Um, Bivacod, I'm going to pass it around, I just need everyone to sign that. We already approved it at the last meeting, but it didn't have, I didn't have a cover or a sheet with signatures. And the ground maintenance ordinance, so that was in everyone's packet? So did people have an opportunity, people have any comments, suggestions? Think it's beautiful the way it is?
I noted under section four, under B, where it talks about the ground should be safe, clean. I feel like there needs to be something additional about roadways, like trees, grass growing, trees that kind of go over the sidewalks, over the roadway. And when people like have overgrown, like weeds, grass, and it's going into the roadway, that those, that needs to be trimmed as well.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
I do.
Yeah.
On A, the second sentence, the town manager or his designate, can we make that gender neutral and put that there?
Sure.
And then.
Or just change it to her designate?
You know, her, his, you know, but there can be singular or plural, so, so there. You know, and then the other thing is I, I like, you know, the responsibility and the duties. And the only thing is because of the way we handled it when we had the twelve or thirteen letters that had to go out, you know, you had to come here and have everyone sign it. And it would expedite the process if you were just able to sign it and send them out, so.
I think when I read back, it's, it kind of gives me that power that I find the properties that need letters and then I just inform you of those properties, but I can settle that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that could be included just in a monthly update, so.
Yep. Do you ever receive Judy phone calls, letters stating a neighbor's property needs to be taken care of?
Yes.
That's one way of finding.
Yep, I do. That's how I, I mean, unless, lots of times if I'm driving around and see things, I make note of it. But it's mostly people coming to me, people calling me, you know, telling me that.
Right.
I mean, some are obvious. I don't know if, so West Street was cleaned up today, next to Dale's, the vacant, vacant property. Totally, totally trimmed, mowed, raped. It's, it's down to the ground, so that's totally cleaned up, so.
And it seems like there have been some that are habitual, like the one that I don't even know because I, a little patch where Irving owns, I don't know.
Oh, yep.
That every year a letter has to be sent. So sometimes I think it's just people don't, if you don't live here, you know?
Right.
People just don't think about it, but some of the other ones I think, you know, neighbors, you know, in that area, people don't want to live with.
Well, that's why I wondered if somebody makes a phone call here that states, look, you know, can you make mention to this certain individual or residence that things need to be picked up or taken care of? That's a good way to approach it because now you've got, you know, a complaint.
Right, and I'll go look at, if somebody, I'm not just going to take their word for it, if they tell me, I'll go look at it. And then when I do the letter, I try to go again just to make sure I'm sending the letter out. And they did clean it up by that time, but, yeah, I mean, one of my, one of my questions was, you know, because we have some space, like a lot of the properties, people don't live in them. So it's, I don't know if they hire people and they're just left and it's, you know, and they look horrible. And the houses around them look nice. And I don't think it's fair to neighbors who have taken care of their properties and somebody next door doesn't care. But, because it is, you know, once the high grass gets in, things start living in there.
Yeah.
And that leads into other people's property and people don't understand that. But one of my questions was, because this didn't really speak to it, is about vacant lots that don't have a dwelling on them that are high, and should they be mowed?
So I thought, I recall something about, I thought like that they had to be mowed once a year.
Oh, right, yeah, once or tw- yeah.
Yeah, something like that, I mean.
I'm not sure if that, I, I want to say that's somewhere in State statute that that conversation was taking place here. I, I don't know, but I recall that conversation because I think it was based at one point on Helen's Lot over there on.
Oh, yes.
Proctor Road and then on that other lot on West Street, so.
The lot between Protovansky's?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one I was referring to.
But I mean, we should, we should look and see what that says.
Yeah.
Because it's, you know, like you said, it's unfortunate when people are attentive to their property and then you have neighbors that are unattentive, it's frustrating.
And I know last year, one, there were several shrubs that had grown and they're way, you know, I mean, when you walk by the sidewalk, you had to basically duck.
Yeah.
And our guys went there and trimmed them all, and that's kind of not their job.
Right, yeah, so, yeah, we'll have to put, we should put something in about public sidewalks, public walkways need to be free and clear for passage.
And you mentioned before, Lisa, about habitual offenders.
Yeah.
You're, well, it shouldn't be every year, you shouldn't have to send something out. You should get one notice and then, and if it's an every-year thing, then you should start escalating, you know, whether it's.
Yeah, that's the only one I really think of that's been, that I can think of, is that lot there.
Chronic.
Yeah.
Not every year. Yeah, you shouldn't have to remind them, you know, send something out, I would just take the next step.
And maybe that's, you know, that, that could be an enforcement piece that we put in.
And it would have to be revised in here because it talks about being fined.
Yeah, Albert?
Section four A, walkways, walkways shall be safe for pedestrian passage. Are they referring to on private property or their street sidewalk? They also have to make sure that it's safe for pedestrian passage.
I think this is talking about probably private.
Private.
Property owners.
Yeah.
And then when you were just referring where the town crew was doing its tuning, trimming, that was the landowners hedge approaching onto the public sidewalk, so.
And I just know there's certain corners and stuff where, you know, grass is growing up high and you're going around the corner and it's, it's like into the road, you know, and it's.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not talking about the West Proctor Road. Talking about the West Proctor Road, I'm talking on streets and towns.
Yeah. And, you know, in coaching, we have a little problem up on Wormsby. Those bushes are going way over the wall and into the actual highway portion.
Yeah, and then that impacts the culvert and all that, you have, you have water, so, yeah. So maybe that's what we need to think about, kind of addressing things like that a little clearer.
It's hard, because a lot of these properties, the person doesn't own the house. Um, you know, it was families, they live there, they don't care, I'm sure they're not even opening up my letter, probably. You know, so then it's like, well, what's the next step, you know?
Well, the next step is we do it and there's a lien on the property, and I bet all of a sudden they wake up. So, yeah, so I think we need to probably look at the enforcement piece, changing that, kind of like what Jay said, if, you know, we shouldn't have to, we could define what habitual offender is. Or chronic offender, or, you know, whatever, however you want to use it.
But doesn't.
Yeah.
Doesn't section three B address that, it's the property owner that's supposed to get the letter and.
Yeah, that's who we send it to.
So renter, they don't really care.
They're not a renter, it's a family member who passed away, so they live there and they don't care. You know, I mean, that's what I've been told anyway, so.
All right, well, anyway, we need to clean it up, so, because the minute somebody has a question and there's not clarity, um, and maybe, yeah, feel a little stiff, think about the enforcement and penalty piece. So feel free to bring suggestions or, you know, wording.
Email me too.
Yeah, that would be great.
You know, things that came to mind that you'd like changed in it, or the guys?
Okay, motion would be in order to move into the Board of Water Commissioners.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Judy, water line inventory.
So I just wanted to just update everybody that the, um, the grant that we had applied for, for that, it's all been finalized with the state, so that's gonna be fully covered through a grant, no match, nothing, so. That Aldridge and Elliott helped the guys a lot and the guys helped them. Some people have contacted me about photos of their pipes and stuff and what to do, so I've kind of helped a couple people. But I think a lot of them have contacted the state directly and let them know what's in their habits as far as pipes, so. We're gonna be doing flushing, hydrant flushing, the week of August nineteenth. So I'll be posting that out there and letting everybody know.
Okay, anything else?
So they've had a couple, the guys last week had a water main they had to shut off, because somebody had a water leak in their house and they needed the water shut off so they could work on it. And the main, the pipe was actually broken where their shut off was, the shut off was broke. So they had to dig down further to get to where they could fix it, so they repaired that and put a new one on, so.
So is that the one on Grove Street?
No, this is on Eden. Oh, the one on Grove Street, they did, well, they did part of that, and part of that fell on the town, because the water main went, instead of going from the house to the street, went from the house to the next house. And it wasn't a problem for those people, so the owner had to dig there, but the water main was in the road, so they had to dig to get to the water main to change that, so we had to pay for that.
Yeah.
That was an actual leak that they found after the fact?
It was a sewage backup in, uh, one of the houses.
All right. Uh, motion would be in order to leave the Board of Water Commissioners and enter the Board of Sewer Commissioners.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, anything?
No, nothing really new to report, um, moving forward, hopefully, with the next phase of the lagoons and seeing where that goes. Um, I do have it in my manager's report, I did speak to Senator Welch's office. I had a very long conversation with her, um, we talked for over an hour. Um, but she basically, I questioned why we didn't get any money, she went through the whole process. And just like everything with the state or government, it's not an easy process, so. They had over two hundred applicants, they go through, from what my understanding is, both offices go through. Sanders and Welch's office go through them, because you can go through each office to apply. Um, you can actually go through both, they told me. And so they go through, pull the ones they feel are worthy of grant money, and those aren't necessarily chosen. So then they go to a subcommittee, the subcommittee then decides what the top priorities are of those. Then they approve those, and then they have to put it in the budget, and then if the budget isn't approved, none of those are approved either, so it's a very lengthy process. Um, the reason we weren't chosen is because we have the ability to get funding for this project elsewhere. So they look at places that you can't get funding for the project, they think it's a good project, but there's no funding available, so, because we can get water fund revolving loans and the grants through USDA, they felt that this, that they weren't.
Well, isn't that a little bit of one of course, Katokey, because others in the state of Vermont got money to do.
Unless they don't get, because there's some, like the revolving loan grant, we've used that a lot, so.
But that's available to any municipality.
Correct, but not for like a bike path or something like that, so.
But when we read through the thing, other towns received it for water and wastewater.
I know.
So that was a little bit of.
I don't know, they're telling me that, and they also said that, I said we sent letters of reference and they said, oh, we don't read those.
Yeah, I think she's, she's a little smoke up her skirt.
So she sent me some other information to reach out to, and it was so odd, because I, I hung up with her and I bet twenty minutes later Sanders' office called me, and I thought that was really weird.
Yeah.
Trying to cover their bases.
And I said, well, like, because I called them and they never got back to me.
Did they have the same story?
No, he kind of just seemed a little off, just kept apologizing, sorry to get back to you, sorry to get back to you.
Well, I mean, because.
He called just because they text me inviting me to an event that Sanders was gonna be at. And I said, um, I wouldn't go to an event, because I reached out to you about these grants and you've never reached back to me, so if he's looking for votes, I said, not gonna attend, sorry, so.
Well, but when we looked through that list, there were multiple communities that got money for water and wastewater projects, and every municipality has access to the revolving.
Right, I don't know why those.
We don't have any different access to funding USDA or that than any other municipality, so.
Unless it was a bigger, bigger ask, like if their, if their lagoons caught, or their wastewater treatment facility cost twelve million, then maybe they figured they'd give them two million.
As I said, little smoke up.
But they said next year, um, they said, apply to both offices, both Sanders and Welch's.
Because one hand doesn't talk to the other, apparently.
Now, if you go up the same sheet that they pass around, it's a different avenue and, and look at it as environmental.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know.
You have to know they're, they're down there working for us.
She basically agreed with me that the focus is definitely on housing and, like, the housing and the rehab.
Well, once you get the housing rehabbed, you're gonna need a place to when you flush, so. All right, uh, motion would be in order to move into the regular select board meeting.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Sheriff's Report, everyone has that in their pocket, any questions about that?
He did email me and said that one of his, maybe I mentioned this before, one of his officers was injured in a, um, in arrest. He was arresting somebody for DUI and he got, he didn't say. And he was injured, so he was out, so he was down an officer, so. He just wanted me to be aware of it, so.
All right. Town Manager's Report.
All right, let's see. All right, so as you know, the sidewalk on South Street started on the fifteenth of July. Um, certain sections have been poured with concrete, so they're moving right along with that. I do get reports updated from the project manager. There was a complaint made to the state about a culvert on the Florence Road and the neighboring property. Um, so this was out on, um, the very end of Florence, almost to the border. Um, there's a new, a property owner that was putting in a new house, he hasn't built it yet. And he has a runoff that goes through the culvert into a property on the other side, which is pretty much swamp. Um, so he had dug a trench to make the water flow better and to drain, and the neighbor didn't like that, because he said, you're pouring more water into my property. So he asked the neighbor to change it back, the neighbor did, put it all the way back the way it was in the beginning, and he still complained and called the state. So the state came out and did inspection, the state said, there's nothing, there's nothing wrong. The culvert size is fine, the water runoff is what it is, and it's, you know, it's not gonna impact your property more than it has been, so. So we dealt with that, hopefully it's gone. Um, concert this week, If It's Not Raining, Chaz Canny, he's a solo. So he'll be at seven o'clock on Wednesday, weather permitting. Um, let's see, emailed the final ordinance to Beaver Pond Committee, they had no response back, so that's why I had you all sign it today. Parks and Rec Committee meeting was held July ninth. Need to place an ad for volunteers or hired help to have the roller rink open through the summer, evenings, some weekends, um, as well as someone to make ice this winter. So I did put an ad out on our website for now, looking for people to help, um, open the roller rink. Uh, right now it's open Friday evenings from three to nine, three, six to nine. Six to nine, three to nine, six to nine, it was three hours, six to nine, um, and so I'm looking for people who are willing to either volunteer or we pay them to go up weekends and at least a couple nights during the week so kids can roller skate. And then the person who did the ice has left, moved out of town, so I'm looking for somebody to make ice this winter. Um, I also put out for health officer, but Lisa agreed to remain health officer. And then also the other was.
There was another committee, there's a planning question? It was Rutland Regional Planning Commission Transportation Advisory Committee.
That's the one that.
That sounds pretty fancy.
That's the one that Albert is the alternate on, and I was looking for the regular member, so.
And Rutland County Solid Waste District rep.
So Carrie has resigned from the Rutland County Solid Waste seat, so I need somebody to serve on that, so.
Are any of those that you can do virtual?
Um, usually the Rutland Regional Planning ones you can.
Because I think that might make a difference for people if they.
Rutland County Solid Waste, I never knew it to be virtual, but that was, when I was on it, it was, I was at City, so that was a while ago.
It is virtual now.
It is now, the Rutland County Solid Waste?
Yes.
And do, maybe it would be good also to put on there for, at least for those two, because when they meet and that you can attend virtually, because that might make somebody more apt to.
Well, it used to be a board, like we appointed a board member. It's like originally when all the board members were here, board members were appointed, like, each board member was on a committee, two committees members, way back. So I didn't know, and then Carrie was on it when she was, and then she wanted to remain on it when she got off the board.
Oh, okay.
And the backup is basically Kyle, but, um.
So who would like to be the.
If anybody on the board would like to be on it.
Do you know what day they meet? It's hard, it's hard to agree to something without knowing.
Um, I'm trying to think of what night they meet.
Like if it's the second Tuesday or something like that?
I'll double check.
Okay.
Um, but if not, I mean, if we can find somebody in the community willing to be on it.
Yeah, I, I just think if you could find out when they meet and then that you can attend virtually and maybe just throw that on there.
Yep.
Maybe that would encourage someone else. I, I think it's nice when other people do it, so we.
Oh, yeah.
They come and report, you know, their take, so, because we have a different perspective when you're looking at contracts and dollars and things like that, so.
Right. No one's been knocking on my door yet, so.
No, but I think if, if you could join virtually, that sometimes changes people, you know.
All right, um, oh geez, right below I put what I posted for. Um, there's been some complaints about partying at Beaver Pond, the swimming area, not the picnic area. Um, swimming area, garbage left behind, rut marks, clothes left behind, food containers.
Posted that.
So, um, it's like ten o'clock at night, you know, I've asked the police to patrol when they're in the area and stuff like that, um.
It's amazing, because it used to be on the, on the sheriff report, there were Beaver Pond constantly in the old reports, and now it's like they forgot Beaver Pond existed.
And I mean, it's, you know, like, I know, like if somebody said, we should put something down, down to dusk, I said, kids that are gonna go up there, they're not gonna care if it's down to dusk.
They wanted to be dark.
They're just gonna go, I said, unfortunately, we used to go at dark, but we did leave crap behind, you know? We picked it up, we didn't damage property.
Yeah.
So it's just kind of an ongoing thing there, and people are, you know, kind of complaining about it, so.
Yeah.
You say, you say people are complaining, they're calling you and complaining about it, but what's their expectation? Are they giving any?
Well, first of all, if there's any, like, the sheriff's office told me, when people call me, to tell them to call them, not call me. They said, have them call the sheriff's office. Lots of times, one incident was very, very late, so sheriffs aren't on duty. Um, and they didn't want to call the state police to tell them to come and break up a party. So they just feel if we put signs up saying this.
Who's the sheriff?
No, one of the residents, if we put a sign up, it will deter them, and I said, it really won't. Um, and I said, we do have a sign at the entrance to the picnic table, picnic area that covers Beaver Pond, the entire pond, with basic rules from our ordinance, so, and that is up now. We, Kyle, I gave it to them last week, so.
But they would suggest having a sign put up, is that what they're saying?
Yeah, this one person.
Do we have a sign at all? Do we need to put up a sign?
I told her I'm not putting up a sign.
Okay.
I'm not littering the Beaver Pond with signs.
No, that's fine, I just don't know what they, I mean, if they're, if they're calling you for things like that, they got some expectation as to.
Right.
What may or may not be done, you know?
I mean, other than putting a twenty-foot fence around the pond and saying, you know, I mean, and the police could go by and as soon as they've gone by, the kids could pull up, you know what I mean? It's just a.
No, I get it, there's no easy answer sometimes to put things down.
They used to go to the falls and, you know, it's just.
I just, I mean, I wish, I remember years and years ago when we had garbage pails at the pond. And we had garbage pail down by Gorham Bridge, and we, you know, but it's like then that becomes our job to empty garbage and people start throwing more than just garbage in there and stuff, so. I mean, I think it's just trying to deter them, and that's why I say we don't put a lot, that's why we don't have a lot, we shouldn't have a lot of chairs, tables, you know, because.
That encourages. Yeah, I would just think if we could get the sheriff to, you know, be a little more visible, maybe.
Yeah. Um, I did get a call about a white van parked on the side of the pond for a few nights. Um, I let the sheriff know, um, someone took pictures of it for me, I sent that to the sheriff, so they analyzed the plate. Um, apparently they were, the thing is, it was a brand-new van, it was a really nice van, but they had like solar panels outside hooked up to the vehicle and stuff, and they had a dog and they were smoking, I don't know. But I, I went by once and saw them, and then I had a couple people check and they were gone, and I think they're gone now, so. I haven't had any complaints. Um, let's see, all the phones have been installed for the new phone system. I'm waiting for a complete portal changeover to determine what the savings is gonna amount to, so. Had a couple zoning issues with people adding structures to property without permits. Um, some were noticed way, well after the fact and stuff, so. And I, I've kind of, I've explained to the zoning administrator that if someone wants a permit, you go to the property, meet with the person, they need drawings, they need, if it's something big or dimensions, things like that, they fill it out, and until we receive payment for the permit, you don't sign off and give them authority. And then once they pay it, you sign it, then they can put the sign on the property, so. But I don't know, I mean, it's other than, again, like, you know, driving around, finding. But I don't know, I mean, it's other than again, like, you know, driving around finding pools, driving around finding a shed that, whoa, wait, that shed wasn't there before. Why is it there now?
That, that's the beauty, I guess, of reappraisal, all of a sudden all these new structures will now be taxed.
And then I did get here back from the Rutland Regional Planning that both of the dam repairs and the water flow off West Street that you had mentioned are not covered by the hazard mitigation assistance.
Sorry about that.
Well, they said that basically if, if, let me see, how'd she word it? So basically she said that the one flooding concern mentions merely soaking backyards wouldn't be eligible by itself. If a project upstream were to address the problem at the source, which must be on public land, then the properties would certainly yield the benefits. So, and then dams just aren't considered eligible. They want them fixed, but they don't want to help us pay for them, so. So that's, I think, it.
All right, any questions for Judy? All right, old business, West Street.
All right, so I did receive the letter back, signed, that I sent to the homeowner, telling her that we wanted to remove the asbestos. I can't guarantee it's her signature, but it's a signature. And then I did reach back out to the state or to Alderson, who was going to do the asbestos removal, because I said, "It looks like the estimate minimum is $9,000." So she did write back and she did break everything down and it does, it comes out just slightly, I think, over $9,000. So in order to get on their list, we have to sign the letter that they sent me, I have to sign off on it, and then they put us on a schedule to go there, so.
So they, they, in the letter, they understand if we are paying to do this?
I told them that, yeah, that if it's not, if it, if they don't do it and we do, the cost is going to be a lien on their property and eventually we can tax sale it based on that lien.
And so are we required to give them X amount of time to see if they can?
They've been given time. They've been given letters, they've been given...
So are we, so is the letter saying, do, are we required to send them a letter to give them notice that we'll be taking action and this is what it...
Well, she basically had the letter signed to say, "We're going to just take care of it," because they're not going to.
Yeah, we're going to take care of it. The letter that the property has signed. They acknowledge that, okay.
And I'll reach out with a phone call to them too.
Okay.
Just to let them know.
Well, I just don't want this to fall back with you.
Well, the problem is now, it's like they just keep putting stuff over there.
Well, yeah.
And so it's...
I just, do you have, can we see the letter later or do you have? I just want to make sure that... I don't want to pay $9,000 and then they go, "Oh, we thought you were just doing that to be good neighbors."
Yeah, right. No, it's good to get it in order to, so it's understandable, it's clear.
Yeah. That if we do this, what the stops are, not that I want, not that we want the property.
So I don't know if this mentions about the lien on it. It's probably my conversation with her.
Well, maybe we should just document, I think, that prior to...
Yeah, and I, her husband, not her husband, the resident's husband also knows. I've told him several times.
So I think maybe we should send a letter to document that says that this is the cost that will give you, I don't know, X amount of days to let us know that you have the funds to pay for it. And on this date, cleanup, cleanup will begin, that us paying for it results in this, that when the town pays for it, a lien goes on the property. I don't even know like what the timeframe is for them to pay that back.
Uh, that's, yeah, that's what we'd have to figure. I'd have to talk to Celia about that.
Yeah, and I would put that in there and then say, you know, if it's not repaid by X, then statutorily we have the ability to tag somebody. I think, I think it's better to line everything out.
And I don't believe she's in the nursing home any longer, so, or she's not where she was, so.
And I think this is great, but I just think that, you know, and it's better to have it documented because people always forget what you talked about in the talk.
Now, when we turn around and do something like this, is there any kind of an administration fee of anything added on to that, just to let them know that because of the time and effort that, you know, you're putting in?
Yeah, I don't know, because I've never really done it before, so.
I don't think so, unfortunately. Well, you know, it is, if they want to pay that $9,000 to do it or they want to pay $10,000...
Right, right.
To have somebody else do it, I mean, it may just give...
I don't, it doesn't matter if it's $9,000 or $15,000, I don't think you're going to see it, so.
And that's why I think it's important to put the date in there, you know? If actually, if it hasn't taken place by, I don't know, July 28th...
Right.
Just arbitrarily, that on July 30th, we're going to begin cleanup.
Yep. And I can't give them that date for cleanup, because they won't know until I sign the letter to them.
No, but we can send them the letter and give them the deadline.
Give them the deadline.
And say, "If you haven't, if it hasn't been cleaned up by this date..."
Yep.
"...then the town will cease..."
Yeah.
Yeah, so. And then I think, and so are you looking for a motion to sign that contract?
Um, yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I think I should.
And I don't have a problem doing that. I mean, authorizing Judy to sign the contract with the asbestos company.
And we'll have to figure out where the funds come from to...
Yeah.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? It's a little bugging.
Not on the seat.
I'm not sure. If I could catch... All right. Okay, anything else on that? That's it. So the Casella contract, which is in your pocket also. So there's been some concern about trash days, that some people have multiple trash cans. And it seems like there's been maybe like this weird understanding that people could just call Casella and get them. And so I, I...
It's additional ones. So people call the town office and say they want another garbage container or they want another recyclable container. And I guess in the past, they've just been ordering them for the people and having Casella deliver them. So there's no way of making the homeowner go to Casella and purchase them and say, "Well, we'll pay for this additional one," because they're still picking up the garbage and we're paying for it. So I reached out to Casella just to be clear and I said, "It's my understanding each resident gets one recyclable and one for garbage." And she said, "That's correct." And I said, "And no more." She said, "Exactly. If they have extra garbage, they have to purchase the bags in the town." And that was the agreement. So I just want to make sure you're aware of it and tell them, you know, in the office that this is the way it is and nobody gets...
Because when you drive down on Wednesday, you'll see that people have two recycles, you know, some people have two garbage.
So was it the residents were calling here, the town?
Yes.
Like Celia?
Yeah.
So at one point...
Asking them to order more?
Yeah, telling them they need additional ones.
And they would order them at whose cost?
Our, yes.
So at the town's cost and they would give them...
So there were times when people moved out of a house and for whatever reason, they took the toders with them. I don't know if they put junk in them or whatever. You move into the house, you don't have toders. I mean, I'm not saying, it's not that everyone that calls has, is trying to get something for nothing. And then at one point, several years ago, the board said at one point, if you wanted an additional recycle toder, you could have that. And, and then that kind of came to an end also because recyclables were not, didn't have any value and were paying. And, but if you drive around, you'll see that people have, and it's just like, it also says in here, like if you have a multi, more than four dwellings in a building, that we're not required to service. But there are places that have more than four and they have a bank of toders, so.
Yeah, I could see replacing them if they needed to be, but not additional.
Right.
But the contract said, I believe, when they're, they're no longer in use though to be returned to Casella.
Right.
And if they're damaged, then the people have to pay for them. So I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page that if they call, no, we do not, we don't allow more than one. If you have duplex, yeah, one and one, you know, two and two on both sides, but...
Okay, are we going to remedy the problem? Because there are, like you say, there's a number...
I don't know how you're going to remedy it because it's been allowed to go on, so...
Well, I think maybe if we reiterate that there's the bags here that you can buy for extra garbage.
Well, I mean, I think the first remedy is that we stop and say, "No more toders."
Right.
And if someone comes and says they need an additional, you know, if they bought a house or something like that, I guess you want to think that they're being honest because they've just moved in. But I, I mean, I think you just stop cold turkey, in my opinion, that there's no more, no more toders.
And if people call, ask you for one, that's when you basically say, "We have bags. If you need extra, we have bags, we do not order more, you know, more than two totes per household."
Now, the bags themselves are identified by color or something?
Yeah, they're maroon.
And they say John Focker over here. Yeah, they say something, huh?
There's a, there's a resident on West Proctor that, they put their garbage out in recycling and then they had like nine bags of regular garbage bags and they're still sitting there. Like lead bag, I know, I checked today to see whose property, we're trying to figure out whose property that this one lives there. So, because it's been there for a while.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess the, just looking for the consensus that we're not purchasing any more toders, that it, you have one and one for each residence, so that Judy can say, "No more."
Right.
Yes.
Because if you said yes, I was going to sign up for one. All right, anything else?
There's a transportation council meeting in September, so if you have any concerns or something, let me know. We haven't had one in, they normally don't have one in August and September, but...
So does that cover the railroad bridge, the trestle?
Yeah.
I would say that's a concern.
Where is that held? Where is it held?
At Regional Planning. And I imagine by then, by then we'll be meeting over on Evelyn Street.
Yeah, they'll be moved in by then?
I think they said sometime late August or September, that's what I had heard, but...
Oh, they're moving where, to the old SU building there?
To the, where the community college is, right?
Oh, that, that location.
Yeah.
Good luck to them.
Yeah.
This space is bigger, but...
There's a reason why we left. Okay. Anything else? Any agenda items? All right, hearing done, the motion would be in order to adjourn at...
Were there any other questions on the contract?
Oh, I don't know. Any other questions on the contract? No, that was basically it.
Yeah, okay, good.
Okay. So motion would be in order to adjourn at 7:24.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.